Ms. Attorney. It appears that we only have four council members here. Let's get a good face, what we gotta do.
We'll need to nominate and appoint someone to provide over the meeting if our mayor is absent.
That person though, obviously, will still retain their right to vote and act as a council member in a matter of calling for motions.
Nominate, tell me Ward to be active mayor for this meeting.
I second my action. Do you care to call for the vote?
Y'all would like to vote on that motion?
Can I? I assume I abstain?
You're fine. That's the majority of the quorum, so there you go.
Okay, I will call this meeting a regular meeting for the month of September 2018 to order. Let's go, let me update Sid real quick, so...
How do we look back?
George is in the hospital. He's had an emergency appendectomy. His plan was to be here, but when it got in there, it had ruptured and was twisted and some stuff got in behind his colon, so Mr. Chin will be out of commission for several days. Sounds like that he may be in... Kathy told me that he may be in the hospital for three or four days and somebody was telling me that he's supposed to leave for Africa when?
Ford.
So, that's kinda pushing the envelope, in my opinion, but, you know, wish him well. So, let's open our meeting with prayer, please. Our gracious assembly of fathers, we come to you this evening in prayer. We thank you for all the gifts and the blessings you have sort of on each one of us. We thank you for the country that we live in and the freedoms that we enjoy. Dear your Father, we pray, and thank you for this city of Hartford that we're here, that, dear your Father, this township that we live in, that, dear your Father, that we realize that there are issues that we have at hand and in the forefront, that, dear your Father, requires quite a bit of conversation, discussion, and to try to make our city a better community to live in. Sometimes these decisions are not easy, sometimes they're at great anguish, some of the decisions we have to make, but, dear your Father, we pray two things. One is that we do your will and that we keep your children, our residents, at the forefront of all decisions. Dear your Father, we pray a special prayer at this time, that you'll be with George Chin, that he has just come out of surgery, that you give him, your healing hand upon him to a speedy recovery. Dear your Father, we pray that everything went well, that there is no residual side effects from it, and that we know that he has a trip planned for next week, that if that opportunity arises and his health allows, please give him that opportunity to make that travel. Watch over us, God lead and direct us and give us the wisdom to make the decisions this evening that we need to make. This is what praying your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Tom Summons, you're visiting?
Yep, just visiting.
Just visiting?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, has everybody had the opportunity to review all our minutes? We've had, I think, just one. As a matter of fact, I'll tell you something I gotta do. It's hot in here. We're a little on the warm side.
Thank you, sir. I was absent from the August 23 meeting, but I heard that Mr. Nance had a groundhog issue. Does anyone know whatever happened with that?
I'd say it's still there.
I know George contacted some division, not sure which one, and they gave him some advice. I do know he went out there and talked with the residents, and it was as it was presented here in the meeting.
So, was that bad?
I mean, it was bad. It is bad.
Are we doing, as a city, are we trying to do anything on our behalf to try to help?
Well, he called to get recommendations what to do, and then he went back and told them what those recommendations were. We have two people in the county, I forget what they're called, but...
Like pest control?
Are they groundhog wranglers?
Yeah, but they're not appointed, but they are the people that they go to.
There's a guy at Center Town, I think Brad Jersey's name. We got scummed under our building and he come and got in.
Ma'am.
I heard that it was pretty bad how he described it, so I'm just curious.
Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Do I hear a motion to accept minutes as presented?
Make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Ward, what have you got for us?
I've got an amended motion, or amended ordinance in here, I think we'll hit up here in a moment, but that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the financials? Have we got any money?
Just curious, is this after the new ordinance for the water rates and everything went into effect?
So, the first billing is already gone out with the new rates?
Yes, and you'll see that reflected on that statement. That's when you see that positive number.
Not here, on this?
No, on your financials, that's the pool of water.
Oh, okay. So, how much is that being, how much is the difference?
Well, it's about a half to twelve.
That's 144 a year if we average it.
So, you went from a negative six thousand a month to a positive twelve?
So, we went from negative six to positive twelve?
Yes, but there's more than one variable that I also is going on here, but the main one is rate.
So, we're looking, if that was just it, just that one, that variance out there is about two sixteen a year, roughly, two hundred? That's pretty positive considering the financial situation the city's been in the last several years on what? Anybody have any comments in regard to the financials? Matter of fact, it's eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. May I ask financially, it seemed like we've done a little better not having to borrow so much money like we normally have to get for tax time?
Kind of.
Kind of?
Because we're using occupational taxes when we have some...
And I understand that, but...
And they are set up as a loan, but we will have to do that on Monday.
I understand, but my point being is, it hasn't been quite as drastic as years past.
Right, right. And the mayor would like to, who voiced his concern, and he would like to start very quickly trying to pay back some of the occupational taxes.
Well, once the taxes come in, I mean, and we're gonna discuss, we can discuss that in a little bit.
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions or updates on the financials or concerns? Everybody saw the comparative analysis on the water income between after the water rate increase? That was a pleasant outcome.
Yeah, I was glad that my water rate went down.
Your water rate went down?
My water bill went down.
Next month, would we go on record to send part of my water bill to Mr. Scott?
(laughing).
Dad, or can I just send Chase to your house for a while?
I don't know, I think ours only went up about five percent.
What, which one?
On the business license. It says it balances eight thousand compared to three thousand.
Are you looking from, went from one month to the next?
What page is that, Jerry?
It's on page one of five hundred grand funding.
So, was that...
In the current period and comparative period.
Which was prior?
Why did the business license, but we ain't increased that many businesses here ever?
Okay. What you're actually comparing is not actual businesses, that people that have paid and the timing of such.
So, we've done a much better job of collecting our business licenses this year?
Correct. And in fact, we're actually getting phone calls and she's, one thing she does every week is she's also looking at the newspaper every single week.
Who's doing this?
Patty. She's the one that does the business licenses. But there is, part of it is just the timing of when the people choose to pay. If they want to pay for the license early or for the pay on time or late. So, when you're comparing it from one year to the next, because you're actually comparing this from August 18 to August 19, so you yourself as a business owner, and you may not have paid yours in August last year, but you may have done it this year. So, it really doesn't have anything to do as far as we have more businesses or less businesses, it's when they pay.
I thought you didn't have much choice when to pay.
They are due.
Oh, they're due in June, July, yeah.
Man's already paid it, I'm sure yours is too.
Yeah. I pay it when it's lettered to pay.
I do know that she has a stack of second notices that's already went out for those that haven't paid. And we are also, the other thing that we're doing is we are watching individuals that are paying, they're actually coming in to pay their water bill if they have a business. We're communicating that immediately and asking Patty, hey, have they paid? So, we're very much on top of making sure, because just like he, if you come in to pay your water bill, that's a prime opportunity for me to say, okay, you have to pay your taxes.
If my water bill ain't paid, well, you need to call me, because that could either lost it or forgot it.
I would say that we probably need to, I don't know how we can do it without costing us more money than what revenue we get off of it. The golf cart permits, I see a lot of people riding around town, and I'll be the first person to admit, I have a Gator that I've driven on the city streets, and I bought one last year, but I forgot all about it. So, you know, I think people are operating these, I mean, we pass the ordinances, we allow these type of devices to be on the city streets, but we do require them to be permitted, and I'll be the first person to admit that I forgot to purchase one. So, how they run? Will they run September to September, July to July?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but what we can do is we can look at our list that is licensed now and or has expired and make sure that they have.
I would, if it's not very much trouble, I would, can we just send those out for renewals? Because I forgot, I forgot all about it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with that ordinance, but are they, can they ride on any street in Hartford?
No, no. They're not supposed to ride on Clay Street, 69, 231, except like where I live, you've got Smith Street and Gillespie that goes to the hospital. Now, they can come on Clay Street to get to Gillespie, but they're not to travel Clay Street, which is 1543.
Which is a state highway.
Yeah.
City streets.
City streets only.
And then like if they're crossing 231, just to cross diagonal across 231.
Yeah.
So, what I'll do when I, if I come down to go down to the building or something, I do all the back roads and do everything I possibly can, and then I come down over here by the stoplight and then I crawl straight over to go across 231. I don't try, and I try to do everything I can to keep off the major thoroughfares.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, I think it's, lack of better terms, it's just ignorance, most of us forgot, you know, or don't realize or don't remember or whatever the case may be. Any other questions about our finances?
No, that's the only thing I thought we hadn't doubled in businesses.
None that I've seen. Been a nice thought. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the financial stake.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No old business? No old business?
Hmm.
Not really?
He told me he was gonna do was talk about something, what, that he was gonna do that down in the station, and just kind of update you on that.
Some things have been brought to our attention, and I'll ask Tara, if she knows any more about it, to elaborate on. Ethics Board, it is a committee that will evaluate actions and activities by this body or any subcommittees that are created, I'm assuming, to make sure that there's been no violations as far as ethical actions are concerned.
You have an ordinance, an ethics ordinance, and essentially it calls for a panel, three people, I believe, to be appointed to that board, similar to any other board, commission whatnot that you have in the city. I think that George was just looking to try and come up some names and nominations.
He was. I did throw out the name this morning, Dean Gray, to George, that would be one name that I could throw out to him. Finding somebody to sit on these boards will not be easy. It's a non-compensating committee that will evaluate any improprieties, I guess, that they feel like has taken place. Is that right, Tara?
There are a variety of things I could be certain of.
So, I would encourage, if you've got any ideas or names, to make sure with the City Hall or George at least gets those. The next thing we have on our agenda is amend the abandoned urban property ordinance 2018-07. Is that in our packet or is that individual?
Yeah, it's in the packet. It's drive individual financials. I'll elaborate a little bit if you'd like. We had this ordinance that had been passed by the council back in 2015 in accordance with the statute at the time, and a model ordinance that had been passed around in the various cities shortly thereafter, and another year, two years after that. I guess whoever originally sponsored the legislation for this particular statute that authorized this ordinance realized that there were some constitutional limitations that we had to adhere to, so this is essentially going back and correcting that within those limitations.
We just need to read the first portion of it?
No, you'll need a first reading today.
Jerry, do you care to read the first portion of it?
An ordinance to amend the abandoned urban property and velourium tax rate set out in ordinance 2015-01 to .75 cents per hundred dollar assessed value.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Our next thing that we need to look at is our current 2018 velourium tax ordinance, 2018-08.
It needs to be the one that's not in the packet.
The one that's not in our packet?
Not in the staple, that'd be in one of those.
Is this a first reading?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Lichten?
Yes.
Do you care to read?
Sorry, section one?
Actually, the top, very top.
An ordinance leaving, add velourium tax for general usable purposes for the fiscal year of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, on all taxes, property within the taxing jurisdiction of the city of Hartford, on each one hundred dollars, one hundred dollars of fiscal year 2018, assessed value as follows, on real estate, real property, 5.509 cents, tangible and personal property, .48 cents, including real and personal property of public service companies.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this, we are actually accepting the compensating rate. I know we'll go on record saying, because our tax base had increased in the city of Hartford and taking the compensating rate, the overall tax bills have been lowered because compensating rate makes sure that we get the same amount of tax dollars this year as we did last year. So, if we're gonna get the same gross number of dollars on taxes and our tax base went up, the effective rate that is gonna be charged on, I think all these are probably gonna be less than what our rates were last year.
What was last year's?
.55.
So, we actually went down...
Half cent?
.41 cents taxes on that. All we have to do is have the reading on this one, right? Okay. I do have a question, because I don't see this on the agenda. City of Hartford, Section 3 Plan, what is this?
These are the pieces around outside of your packet. They were sent to us from Bright Alley for CUBG requirements. A couple of them, actually, there's one resolution and two of the others that need motions only. Resolution is 1802, Section 3 Plan.
Okay. So, we just need to read this?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
It's a resolution.
Sid, do you care to read?
Resolution establishing a Section 3 Plan for the city of Hartford, Kentucky. Whereas during the implementation of the CDBG program, Title 1 of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974, requires that a community, to the great extent, to the greatest extent feasible, utilize low-income persons within the community, increase opportunities for training and employment of lower residents of the city. And, whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department for Local Government has awarded community development block grant funds to the city of Hartford to implement their CDBG project, now therefore be it resolved by the Hartford City Council that the city of Hartford, Section 3 Plan, is hereby adopted and that this plan be enacted and take effect immediately upon adoption of this resolution, approved this 27th day of September 2018.
Do we have to actually have a vote?
Yes, make a motion, make a motion that we accept this, enact this resolution.
All in favor? So resolved.
I'm not sure on the order of the other two pieces. The top one is affirmative action plan, and the other, city of Hartford, Section 3 Plan.
It's not exactly framed as such, but I don't think, I think if you vote on those, that'll probably be more than sufficient, so if y'all...
So, we don't have to really take any action?
Well, I would go ahead, because it's, apparently, these are prepared, so...
Do we have to read the entire thing?
On that, no. I think that basically you can make a vote to accept this affirmative action plan for the city, since it's already drafted and summarized.
Make a motion that we accept this affirmation action plan.
Second. All in favor? Okay. And then on Section 3 Plan?
I presume this is the same thing. I'm looking for exact language here, but I guess it's what they sent over, but yes, the same, same issue. This appears to be another affirmative action plan, is that, there's two of them?
Yes, because there's also, there is paperwork that they're asking for percent of female male, yes, and there is three sets of worksheets that Patty's working on to break out the population. Yeah, that is an action.
Okay, so, we don't need to do anything on this?
I would vote on that one, too.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the city of Hartford, Section 3 Plan.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next thing Mr. Chin has on the agenda is for the bank block wall update. I had to talk to Ray Smith, who was with Wilkerson Plastering today, about another project that I'm talking to him about for the city, for the hospital, to get an update. The color has been picked, I think it's called nat, is it natural white? Is that what it's called? It's not white, white, but it's kind of an off-white. It's already been ordered, as a matter of fact, it's in. And he had a full crew down, around nine people down there working on the wall today. They had KU show up, they've had to tear the corner, the back column down a little bit, because there wasn't enough clearance about the wire. Mr. Chin, myself, Tara, met down there one day with KU about options on the power. They wanted, I gotta quote, it's crazy, thirty-three thousand dollars to move a power line, then they was gonna have to move Mr. Whitting Hill's power to the building, it was gonna be probably grand total of five or six thousand dollars. I think we all looked at it, kinda looked at it, and that's all we did, was look at it. It's a nice thought to move all that, but that just seemed a little excessive, unless anybody disagreed.
Just get a pole moved, it takes, act the con...
That was it. They took forever to get the quote back, and the next thing we know, that they were already starting on the wall, and, I mean, somewhere, some along the line, somebody's gonna have to do something about that pole, because it kinda lays like this. Does it, Tara? It's almost on the wall. So, if you look at it, I will tell you that they had three different engineers, two or three different engineers looked at it. The plan was to dig a footer, and none of this decision, and I reckon Wilkerson's had to make this decision independently, I'm sure they corresponded with the mayor on this. To dig a footer, pour footer, lay concrete block up eight feet, and then go up and drive it. When they dug a pit, an inspection pit, they dug into it and found out that there was wire and there was block and there was brick and there was, when they tore the old Citizens Bank building down, rather than going in there and compacting it, and they just took a lot of the stuff and just threw it in hole. It would not support a footer. And afraid if they dug the footer down next to that building, it would cause the basement wall of the Capers building to topple. So, he met with the engineers, and the engineers made the decision that it would be better to put the styrofoam on the wall all the way up, put to drive it, and it will actually be less expensive than what the original quote was for the footer and that, and there'll probably be enough money left over to do a sidewalk next to it, which will be a curb bumpment, so cars can't go up and hit the building.
Is that gonna preserve the wall, because at the very top, it is starting to lean a little?
He told me that they were gonna do everything they can to straighten everything up and put cap on it. But the wall, once they got to digging the pit, that, all that was in such bad shape, they could not dig it. If they dug a footer big enough to carry that eight-foot block wall, they were gonna endanger the basement and the wall of the entire building. And I told, you know, I learned about that maybe a week or two ago, and he, I had correspondence with the mayor, so hopefully the mayor, I hadn't had a chance to talk to the mayor about that, but the mayor, him and the mayor were supposed to have all the correspondence, but that's what they came up with, that that was gonna be the only really option to do that route. The way he talked, maybe one day next week, they might be starting to finish on top of it. So, anybody got any questions on that? I'm just curious, where are we at on the sidewalk? I know, I know that Mr. Lichten and I abstained at the last meeting, but have we, where are we at on that? I mean, we rebid it, we've done anything on it?
No.
I saw guys out there talking.
Yeah, but there's, but we haven't...
I mean, they just walked up down there and...
We haven't published anything that we're accepting bids yet.
In passing the other day, when I was talking to George, he mentioned, though, that they're, that the engineers re, redone that section that you all approved, I think, to open that up.
To open up for bids, but we haven't gotten to that, to the step to actually to be ready to publish it.
So, is that something we're gonna be getting close? I got a telephone call a couple days ago, three days ago, from Adam Allen, Asphalt Ceiling. His seizing, season is about over, where he can seal stuff, and he's got quite a bit of seller left over. And he said that he would like to get rid of it. He said he would cut the city a good deal, and I don't know what a good deal is compared to what last year's prices or last, previous year's prices be. And he gave me three the other day, and I told him I'd present it. I would encourage the idea that we don't have a mayor here in... the idea that we don't have a mayor here, two of our council members here. I don't know that we'd feel comfortable taking action one way or the other on this without more involvement. Uh, he talked about the cemetery. Uh, the cemetery, we have resurfaced the cemetery with a lot of blacktop. I drove through it yesterday. Most of it looks pretty good. If you'll top, start at the top of the hill, where you come around, where we had it ditch that we put riprap, that has got some cracks in it. I mean, it, because it's by virtue where it's at. There's a tree there and it looks like maybe a little bit, and there's a fine line that runs from me to, at least dusted and not further, where a bunch of, I mean, wide cracks has opened up in it. And then there's one soft spot at the top. He thinks that re, uh, sealing it will, will help, uh, you know, preserve, preserve it. He said there's about a thousand feet of cracks all over the whole cemetery. And, uh, he said that he would blow and sweep the dry, um, fill approximately a thousand feet of cracks and, and hot pour crack filler, and then he would put two coats of sealer with three pounds of sand per gallon with rubber, add to allow, to allow for wear. He gave a quote of eight thousand dollars to do the entire cemetery on that. Uh, the courthouse square, which we did, what, three or four years ago, two years ago, something like that? He gave a quote of six thousand dollars on. And then he talked about restriping Arm Mountain Road, putting stops on the stop signs and no passing on the pavement, which, for those of us who've driven around town and seen that part of it on the streets, I thought that was a, probably not the best wise, wise use of money. He quoted five thousand. The only thing that I can say about Arm Mountain Road, because Tara and I drive it every day, Sid drives it every day, is the hill right there by the cemetery. If she's going out and I'm coming in, invariably, we're both on a, on, on, on one other side. That probably does need to be striped, at least over that hill, and at least a sign put up. And then the, once you top that hill, on the other side of the hill on the right, at the bottom of cemetery, there is a concrete head wall that probably needs to have some type of yellow or some type of button put on it, because I've seen two or three vehicles go off the road and head to that, of which one was my niece. And if you hit that thing head-on, you're gonna get hurt big time. Uh, and our neighbor, Mrs. Ralph, Mackenzie Ralph's, uh, Gales, Gilwatt Ralph, requested both of those to be looked at. Something about the hill there on, on Arm Mountain Road. Uh, excuse me a minute, I've gotta answer the hospital.
That whole road out there, Arm Mountain, is dangerous, all the way through the whole thing. I drove a bus around on it for several years and there's several dangerous spots.
It's not wide enough.
That, and it's the hills, you got a view, it's blocked, you pull out, you just take a chance there where you pull out most.
I mean, I don't know what y'all, I, I do think that Ms. Ralph's right, that concrete thing probably needs to be painted or looking at putting a, a post up in front of it, uh, and a, either signs or something, or strapping, or put a yellow mark across the hillside right there might be, but, uh, I'm not real keen on spending...
I don't think we should take any action.
I agree.
We have more members.
I agree.
Council members here, and the mayor.
Uh, I wanna point out that the Harvest Festival was postponed for this year. That the Harvest Festival pageant is still a go. It's my understanding she has over twenty-some-odd participants. That is this Saturday at the Community Center, uh, from ten to two, I think. Is that correct, Tara? Sound right? Uh, anybody who could be there, she probably gonna need some help. And I can tell you that a good portion of my family's not gonna be there, 'cause they're leaving for Waco, Texas, Waco, Texas on Saturday morning. Is that right?
They tell me.
So, um, Hannah Blair Ward is doing it. Uh, she is my niece, and, but, uh, we want, she already had several enrollees at that time, so, uh, and many people can be there. I'm putting card, do what, Tara?
I, I just, I remembered I need to tell you something about getting a key.
Oh, okay. So, uh, she may need some help. I'm gonna try to come up and do what I can, uh, but I'm not a pageant person. I might be more hindrance than I am help. So, Sid, you a pageant person?
No. Um, I have obligation for Saturday, I would help. The church obligation.
I was the only participant in the man's pageant one time, and I came in second.
You came in second? Well, Jerry, that speaks volumes, doesn't it?
How many was entered into that pageant?
He said he was the only participant?
Only participant.
And he came in second?
I didn't hear that far.
It's kinda, kinda in third of the two-man race, right? Uh, the Christmas festival is something that the merchants has worked on, apparently for a good while, and it's scheduled for November seventeenth. Uh, they've already got a few vendors signed up for it, they've already got some events signed, worked with it. Uh, we've been trying to do some education that, that maybe the city might need to know a little further in advance than what notice we had gotten this year, but, you know, I give them kudos that they're making an effort to make a nice festival this year. But I'll tell you something that the city, that they could use, there are gonna be some sit, some expenditures that needs to be made. And, um, um, for lack of better terms, do we need to appropriate, make some arrangements to appropriate some funds to, to do that? Is the question, I guess I'm asking. You sat there on that committee, were you there? You weren't there the night, you weren't able to make it to meet, or were you there the night?
I don't know.
The, the one Kathy called the meeting?
No, the last one, Tuesday.
No.
She wasn't there.
Okay. So that's my question, is that, um, we took money out of Save the Theater, is that time's passed, is what we've done at Harvest Theater?
Yeah, actually. Would, EDC says a certain amount.
EDC.
Is what has happened in the last two years.
Do, do we still have the offer of the funds from tourism? Could it go to Ward?
Uh, that money was earmarked specifically for Andy Brasher. We would have to go back to tourism to ask that.
The Commonwealth Community Bank...
Committed a hundred dollars.
They okayed the, the, 'cause I took the check back in and asked would they allow us to use it for the Christmas.
I mean, I might suggest that you, you get with them, then find out kinda what they have in plans and, and expense-wise, they might have a better idea.
There is a move, there is a meeting scheduled for Tuesday? Is that correct?
It's on Tuesday at five-thirty.
Well, there's EDC meeting also scheduled for Tuesday, is that correct?
I'll be out of town.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess now let's put you on notice, there may be a request for some dollar figures to help, to support this, because there is gonna be, probably gonna have to have a need for some city employees to be here to do certain things, maybe rent porter potties, uh, to help cover maybe some minor expenses, maybe with a, a band or two, I don't know, I say minor, I don't know why, I have no idea what the dollar figure is gonna be. Uh, was there any dollar figure thrown out there that night? You were there?
Uh, they, they said that King's Highway was free, I don't know.
We will try to get it more concrete.
I know.
We don't know as much, unfortunately, the person who's kinda taking the lead on this was not available for that meeting Tuesday night, so hopefully they'll be coming, this coming Tuesday night.
Well, in the past, haven't we committed money for the Harvest Festival? Like three thousand dollars?
Something like that.
Yeah, I think so, and I don't see why the, we couldn't entertain something like that before.
And then make the decision after you determine what their needs are?
Fair enough.
Because you, you would still have time to give them funds?
Okay. Tuesday night, we should, huh?
This isn't like a two-day festival, right? It's limited hours.
No, it's, it's a one-day festival. It's a one-day festival. Um, has anybody got anything else that they wanna bring up? I would like to, uh, you know, when I mentioned Harvest Festival and that it was postponed this year, you know, on the face page, I'm not on Facebook, but my wife is, and I quite frequently get on her face page, Facebook page to see what's going on. There was a lot of negative comments made about that, there's been a lot of negative comments made about the City of Hartford. I would like to read something. Uh, I've given a lot of thought to this, Tara and I've had some discussion about it. And I would like to read this and, and then if, actually, if OC Moncrief would like a copy of it, I don't have a problem sharing it with them. There have been a lot of rumors, insinuations, and gossips surrounding the City of Hartford, and I feel it's necessary to address them openly and in a sincere manner. For some time, especially over the last few months, there have been a lot of negativity in our community among city employees on our social media regarding Hartford and its leadership. Constructive criticism, discussion is important and can lead to wonderful developments, but constant complaints and accusations do nothing but keep this city from moving forward and discourage hard-working and civic-minded people from wanting to get involved. I am making this statement not only as a City, Hartford City Council member, but also as a resident. I love Hartford. I built a business here, I built a home here, and I've raised my family here. I continue to invest in this city and want to see it grow. No one serves on a city council for glory or money. City council members are paid a hundred and fifty dollars a month and often spend hours upon hours over the course of several meetings each month to try, lead, to try and lead, direct, and make decisions that benefit both workers, businesses, and residents. Tough decisions are often made, and it's a, and it's a thankless job, but we serve because we love this town and the people we, and the people who live and work here. I know people are upset over the sudden cancellation of the twenty-eighteen Harvest Festival. I know workers are upset about potential changes to management structures and policies. I know residents are upset over water rate increases and high sewer bills. But not a single one of these decisions or any other decisions the council has had to make or made, who has had to make or made with any ill will or spite, but simply out of necessity. The world is more expensive than it used to be. Making quality water and distributing to the homes requires chemicals, new equipment, and improvements to our water system. Sewers used to be dumped in lagoons and now must be treated. Hartford's aging population allows for homestead exemptions and decreased property tax revenues. Something must be done to address these increasing costs and lost revenues so that our city can continue to exist. I realize some people think it's foolish for the city to invest in economic development when other account balances are low, but without growth, our city will never earn the tax base and income it needs to thrive. Most importantly, never are these decisions made without full disclosure and vote from the council. It is very easy to point fingers and blame and criticize, it is much harder to become informed and actively participating in finding a solution. But I encourage every single Hartford resident to do just that. You have questions, call me. I will answer all inquiries honestly and as openly as allows. Instead of listening to gossip or making assumptions, be positive and work with us to understand the truth and brainstorm ideas. Come to a meeting, call me or the mayor or any other council member. We're the ones who are still here trying to do the best we can. And if you disagree with our decision, decisions, at least you will understand why and see that each issue is discussed and prayed over and voted on by the people who genuinely care. We may not always make the best decision or even always agree, but I can honestly say that everyone who currently sits on this council will try to do what they, what they feel is right. Hartford needs positivity and a community that works together instead of tearing each other down. I may not always serve on city council, but I will always love this city. Please do not let false accusations and negativity destroy this town. Work with us, support each of us, and pray for Hartford.
Well said.
Thank you all for indulging me. Any other discussion before we call for adjournment?
Any, I just wanna give you all this.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's not on the agenda, but it's Viola. When they come in and did our comparing, they were basically comparing what the city has to offer and what they have to offer. I just wanna give to y'all for a communication reason, so I only made one copy.
One good copy's made.
So...
Curious, as you looked over it, scared to death? Liked it? Didn't like it?
Uh, to be honest with you, you could say it was gonna pay me a hundred thousand a year and it wouldn't change my decision, basically the way I feel. I think I've told everybody how I feel about Hartford and...
Yeah.
Working here and the big pay cut I took to come here, to be a part of Hartford, you know? But I just wanted to give that away, y'all kinda have an idea of what they said in the meeting and...
Mm-hmm.
And I know a lot of people are against it, but, you know, a few of them are, they like what it says, but...
Well, I think there's one important thing we need to point out, and I said it as I read this. We have a responsibility to run the city as efficient as possible. Our goal is not to scare any employee, but we would be doing the City of Hartford and our own employees an injustice if we don't look at every option that's out there for us.
I agree.
So, uh...
But I just wanna give that, that way you know what they kinda talked about, and that's basically all it was, and I had them send it to our email, so I can print out more if y'all don't, you know...
Or we copy it in there.
Or copy in there, whatever, so...
Uh, we appreciate you being here.
We do.
I, I enjoy time, too.
We do.
It helps the communication a lot.
I think, uh, when I print this one, it, I didn't change the size or anything.
You mean you didn't print it for us old people?
Uh, no.
Test us.
I just wanted to show you that, so, just what they have to offer compared to us, so...
You know, and, and there's one other thing that's come to my attention I would like to bring up, and all I'm asking is for y'all to think about this. You know, the Harvest Festival, the Christmas Festival, um, other events that we have in City of Hartford, uh, even from the Economic Development Council, uh, there are grants that are available. We don't have a go-to person in this city that could help take the lead on doing certain things, that they would be the primary person to contact if there's some questions to be asked along about, along, along this line, some misinformation stuff that we've got. And these are just two or three things that I thought of off the top of my head. Give some thought, is there merit to looking and seeing if it's either a PRN, part-time job, uh, talking about one of our current employees that may have the skill sets that could help do that? You know, um, too many cooks boil a broth. Uh, if we can have one person that could be brought up to date and educated and empowered to help take some guidance and some direction and to help give some guidance and direction on this, it may help us be a little bit more of a, somewhat of a liaison to the community and to our, to our county and our city. Obviously, I'm not asking for a decision tonight, but I think that as we've talked about, you know, whether it be the Harvest Festival or the Christmas Festival or what other ever events we may have, um, I don't know all, I don't know it all. You don't know it all, she don't know it all, but, you know, if we can have one person that's committed and dedicated to that, they can help gather that information and help distribute it, because if nothing else, I'd say, hey, you need to pick up telephone calls so-and-so. Right now, I don't know who you call. I don't.
Is it like a city manager or city coordinator?
Well, it could be a city manager, it could be a city coordinator, if we're not quite ready for that, it could be just a person to help facilitate these other things I just mentioned. I do think somewhere down the road that the City of Hartford needs to think about a city manager, city coordinator, city superintendent, whatever the terminology is. I know the state statute says we probably can't use a city manager, right?
Well, you're not set up as a, like, commissioner or manager based, but you can definitely create a position that does what you need to do.
But, you know, council will come and go, mayors will come and go. You know, if we can someday look at that, these would be people who would be here that can help keep things going. Actually, the, the discussion I was talking about might be even more preliminary and basic than that, but it could lead into something like that. I think we have a need now just to have somebody maybe a few hours a week, or a few hours a month, or a few hours a quarter, doing certain things that we already have basic needs for now. And it could evolve to where we do need to get this other, I, I, I've been an advocate of looking at a super, city superintendent, city manager, city coordinator for a good while. Money dictates, but I do believe this, we can become more proficient and more efficient, the money may already be there.
I think so, too.
We just gotta figure out a way more economically to spend it. I'll get off my doggy pony show. Uh, anybody got anything else?
I think you're right on that. I know, uh, when my son was in band, I had never been to a band, didn't know anything about bands, and I learned pretty quick. And then they wanna know if I'd be vice president, and I thought, I've been vice president in a lot of things and will never do anything, so I said, yeah, I'll be vice president. And then after I said that, I said, what does a vice president do? And they said they put on the band festival.
Whoa!
And, uh, so I put on the band festival for three years, but I had a, a list of things that, who to call to get the porter potties and, uh, what need to be done, and go through that, and it, it made it a lot easier having that, where if you just started out with a blank slate, you, you'd take you the whole time to fill out what you need to do.
You know, it's kinda like doing a job, the tools make a difference. If you've got the tools to do a job, you'll do a better quality job, more efficiently. And it's the same way with people. That's all we are, tools, in some respects, so give some thought about that. Uh, one more thing, I think, before I call for an adjournment, is, um, we are gonna have to have a call meeting. Is that correct? Is that correct? We need to have a call meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. I know that Friday will not work, I know that Monday will not work.
Okay. I'm already gonna be here Tuesday night, you gonna be here Tuesday night?
Yeah, I'll be here Tuesday night.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, we might could do it after, let's say, 6:00 or 6:30 or something like that because we got EDC meeting, I think.
We could do it right before.
Yeah, we could do it before.
It's just to pass that one ordinance, it won't take two minutes, I don't presume.
Right, we just need a, just need a second reading.
So we want to say 4:30? 4:05?
I know, I mean, I know 4:30.
What time's the other meeting, 5:30? I don't know.
Yes, the, November 17th is at 5:30. I know that Jody always has to have later, and I know David has to have early. That was their problem.
Well, can we make it five, can we make it five or 5:15?
We won't shoot for 5:15.
5:15.
And we should be done by...
Well, if that's all, if that's the only thing we're talking about.
So 5:15 Tuesday?
I mean, I think some of us may already be here for EDC, and then we'll go get done with that, and then we'll go into that, and then we can go into the Christmas. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.